Agenda items, last call. Please sign up.
I was just wondering if you could, I just want one agenda item.
Under multi facts, oh, my name is Luis Lopez. I live in ninety-eight La Leva Drive, Mahalia, New Jersey. What kind of funding or contract do you have for multi printer facts?
We have agenda items in the government.
I think in H eleven, P eleven and twelve. How do you get grant funded for that to, you get rent and both, right?
These are both at state contracts.
That's a fax for the planner, right?
Yes.
You get rent or how you get these?
No, we pay for them. We use the state of New Jersey, uh, state contracts. It's not granted.
Oh, okay.
It's not that it comes out of our budget.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anyone else for comments on agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolutions H one to H eleven for unanimous consent.
Okay, cool.
I would like to make a motion to approve resolutions H one to H thirteen to unanimous consent. Motion by O'Connell, seconded by Singh. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Deputy Director, Paulian?
Thank you, Director. I would like to move resolutions H fourteen to H twenty for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion by Paulian, seconded by Hobson. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Reddick?
Thank you, Director. Make a motion to approve agenda items H twenty-one to H twenty-three for unanimous consent.
Motion by Eccle, seconded by Paulian. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Hobson?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to make a motion that I'd like to move H twenty-four to H twenty-eight for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion by Hobson, seconded by Eccle. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Do we have any questions from the media today? No questions from the media. We'll now begin public comment on non-agenda items. Each speaker is limited to four minutes, and they only speak once for a public comment portion. When it is your turn, please state your full name and address for the record. Ann Quinn?
Good evening. My name is Ann Quinn. I live at fourteen oh four Red Feather Trail in Pemberton Township. Uh, I want to talk about the road overlay project that apparently the county has found unnecessary this year. It is outrageous that you have not paved one mile of county roads all year. One of the basic functions of a local government is infrastructure. How can you manage county government and not maintain county roads? The Department of Transportation awarded Burlington County ten million dollars for a road overlay plan for two thousand twenty-two. By not paving the most critical roads, you are basically flushing that ten million dollars down the toiling. Our residents are coping with soaring prices and inflation. Can we really afford to lose these funds? Because you delayed the road overlay process, Burlington County could lose the ten million dollars in state funds from the Department of Transportation. Even if you tried to rush to get something done, now, now, it's not enough, and you will not be able to get ten million dollars in paving done. If you try to get, if you try to get the state to carry that ten million dollars over to two thousand twenty-three, then you are once again showing you think rules don't apply to you, and you can do whatever you want, whenever you want.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael Tam?
I have an unusual request tonight. Last Friday, my wife fell. She fell on the floor in the home, and she couldn't move.
I'm sorry, name and town for the record?
Pardon?
Name and town for the record?
Michael Tam, South Tam from Township, Wrinkle City. And she couldn't move, and earlier that morning, I had called the county for something, some information. And while I was gone for a haircut, right after I went out the door, but then she fell. Fifteen minutes later, one of your county employees, Hal Bozard, called. She had the phone right next to her. She picked it up. He stayed on the phone with her. He called the ambulance, and he was there when I came in the door. We'd like to thank him.
Thank you, Mr. President.
It's good to see he had the patience and the kindness to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tam?
Sir?
Al, Al Bravens.
Reddick.
Yes, Mr. Tam?
How is your wife? How is your wife now?
Not too good.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Not too good, that's another one.
Well, tell them we send our best. We'll keep you in our hearts and prayers.
All right.
Thanks, Mr. Tam. Thank you for taking the time to come all the way here tonight for that. And if you don't know, the gentleman he thanked is the tallest drink of water state. Shira Solomon?
Hi, um, for the record, I'm not Shira. She just stepped out to the laboratory with her three-year-old son.
Oh.
I was just letting her know she's next, so I would just, she's here.
Look away, you little...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the help. Uh, Luis Lopez?
Who is it? My name is Luis Lopez, ninety-eight La Leva Drive. I want to say, oh, how's everybody doing today? Um, have there any changes for this coming election? Like any, like, uh, like they said, something going wrong, something doing wrong, any changes, like, extra security, something like that?
No, situation's not, isn't one of those.
And I, and I appreciate, you know, everyone in that country, I mean, I'm like, go forward. I hope you reach your, you know, in office or a seat in the next few years. Maybe a freehold seat, a county seat, or board education, or a fire commissioner. Now, you know, everybody has to keep forward, and not give up. Eventually, you're gonna win. It's not to see my friend Adam from right here. He's a great, uh, sports politician and a meaningful model. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Luis, how's your mom?
Uh, she's recovering, but still at the same state.
We wish her continued recovery, Luis. Jeff Fortune?
Good evening, Commissioners. Ms. Eccle? My name is Jeff Fortune. I reside at ninety-six Westbrook Drive in Mooresdale. Once again, I stand before you tonight completely shocked by the incompetence of this board. With sixty-six days left of two thousand twenty-two, you all have made history in the worst way, by not paving even one mile of county roads as part of the annual road overlay program. Each year, the New Jersey Department of Transportation awards the county approximately ten million dollars to pave the county roads in the greatest need of repair. This, this year, the priorities include thirty-four miles of roads in over thirteen municipalities, but not a single mile of road has been paved. This state-funded overlay program went out to bid in April of two thousand twenty-two, but this board dragged its feet for six months and then rejected all received bids at the October twelfth meeting, flushing that ten million dollars down the toilet. Even if you were able to pull yourselves together in time to award a contract in the coming weeks, it would then be too cold to begin work. Residents will endure roads in disrepair through at least next year, and as taxpayers, they'd be losing out on ten million dollars in state funding. Can we really afford to lose these funds with residents coping with soaring prices and inflation? Unfortunately, the lack of urgency goes beyond county roads and includes county bridges. This board instituted an emergency closure of the Jackson Road Bridge in Metford last November. It has yet to open back up, leading to extensive detours and cars speeding through neighborhoods with children trying to get around the massive disruption. These are just more examples of how you all think the rules don't apply to you, that you can do whatever you want, whenever you want. Local government needs to provide a safe infrastructure like roads, bridges, for its residents. If you can't handle one of the most basic functions of your job, and this is no joke, I'm dead serious. I'll be happy to take Ms. Allison Eccle's place on the board come January and get to work filling all those literal and figurative potholes you're leaving behind. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Nick Adenos. I reside at five Greenview Drive, San Antonio, New Jersey. Uh, so my question or clarification is alluding to last meeting, October the twelfth, uh, for Commissioner House. Uh, there was an interaction with a vendor who asked about the awarding process or had a voice or concern about the awarding process of the adult protection services. You followed up and stated that you would, or you spoke to that person privately before that contract was awarded, and that you were disappointed that they did not talk to you uh, when this next contract was awarded this year. Uh, my question or just clarification on your position is, are state, are Commissioner, County Commissioners, um, are the process or procedure, are they allowed to talk to bidders before, uh, private bidders before, outside of county and public, uh, community access? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adenos. Terrence Brown? Terrence Brown? Karen Cohen?
Hi, good evening. Uh, Karen Cohen, Mount Laurel, New Jersey. Um, I came up here because I've lived in Mount Laurel for twenty-six years. I lived in Burlington County for twenty-six years. And I want to say a big thank you to our Commissioners because our services are better than ever. Our quality of life is better than ever. You are very cognizant of the environment. Our county parks, uh, our taxes are the lowest, I believe, in all the counties. Uh, notwithstanding, we are the largest geographical county. So I stand here because I see each of you as a servant, a public servant. I know you have something over a couple hundred thousand bosses. Um, and I thank you for all that you do to make this county one of the best. Um, I'm very proud that I live in Burlington County, and I'm proud that we have the great services that we have without hitting our, our budget as hard. And I know that you work hard every single day making sure that all of us are happy that we live here. So I thank you very much, Commissioner Singh, Commissioner Paulian, Commissioner O'Connell, Commissioner Hobson, and Commissioner Eccle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Patrick Duff?
Hey, good evening. My name's Patrick Duff. Uh, you may have read my blog. I do rabble-rouser, uh, media, New Jersey rabble-rouser.
New Jersey, New Jersey dress.
I'm, uh, well, I'm a Haddon Heights resident and, um, former Delran resident, grew up in Delran. Um, I'm here because, um, I've been doing some investigations into the Burlington County Bridge Commission and into the CARES Act loans for the Burlington County Bridge Commission. But before I get into that, I just want to say that, I mean, we have a, um, you know, right now, people are struggling. We keep talking about that. Um, but let me read the actual raises, what people have gotten at the Burlington County Bridge Commission in the last three years. The executive director went from a hundred and ninety-six thousand to two hundred and forty-two thousand. And this year, it's actually two hundred and forty-eight thousand. The treasurer went from one seventy-nine to two fifty-six. That's a hell of a raise. The secretary, who, by the way, is on a New Jersey pension, and, uh, from the sources I say have been told, doesn't live in New Jersey, went from one oh four, or one oh two to one forty-eight. The director of HR, one forty-four to one seventy. It goes on, but it's only the administrators. Everybody else in the Bridge Commission got their pay cut, and people got laid off. They laid off twenty-three employees in two thousand twenty due to the COVID pandemic, but there was no, uh, in the budget, there was no concern at the end of the year because they got about eight million dollars from the federal government. Now, as to the CARE Act, CARES Act loans, I did print an article saying there was sixty thousand dollars missing, and the reason why I printed that is because I've been doing open requests for months about this money. Uh, the first open request from the Bridge Commission, I said, you know, requesting all accounting for the CARES Act money for two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-two, and they responded that they did not receive any CARES Act money when it's in the newspaper, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So I requested the accounting for this. The accounting was just all over the place. There's resolutions, by the way, that are written, but there's no checks written for, for Oracle Hearing Aid Center. Um, there are, uh, individuals that got these CARES Act loans that it looks like what they did with a CARES Act loan is bought a business. They opened a business with a loan that was supposed to be meant for businesses that were struggling. You cannot do that. I am demanding the county investigate these CARES Act loans and investigate what's happening at the Burlington County Bridge Commission. There are people there that are whistleblowers, that are being treated horrendously. And the fact that they claimed in that two thousand twenty article that the administration was going to take a ten percent pay cut, but in reality, the entire administrative cost raised by sixty-two percent, and that's pay and benefits. There, there, that is heinous. So as a, as an investigative journalist, that's what I do. Um, I try to see what's happening, and the most difficult thing is when you will not answer open requests. It's, that's our information. You should give that to us. And Ms. Hobson, uh, I know you, you speak at a lot of these events with the former mayor of Willingboro, Tiffany Worthy, but you didn't refuse yourself from her loan of forty thousand dollars for a nonprofit, which CARES Act loans, from everything I've seen, didn't allow nonprofits to accept that. Uh, the other one for Supreme Desserts or whatever it is, that business just opened up too, right after they got the loan. You need to investigate this because it's a problem. You investigate the Bridge Commission, the raises in salaries, because the people of Burlington County deserve better.
Is Shira Solomon back?
Hi, my name is Shira Solomon. I am a resident, yes, I'm a resident of Willingboro Township, Burlington County. Uh, I was here two weeks ago, and, uh, I'm not going to prepare a speech this time. Yes, E. Um, I did a speech last time in reference to the Burlington County Public Safety, uh, telecommunications that either resigned or retired, uh, that left Public Safety in good standing. Um, the fifteen, which is growing, it's beyond fifteen at this point because I'm receiving phone calls from other former employees of Public Safety, uh, that are upset about the COVID hazard pay that has been restricted from us. Um, dictation had stated on, uh, March two thousand twenty to March of two thousand twenty-two that, um, the county was appreciative of those of us that served the county during a pandemic, that came to work, that caught COVID. As I said in my previous speech, I'm one of those people. Um, I caught COVID from a coworker that was sitting next to me at the time. He was a baby, and I was breastfeeding. Um, and I had to go home and possibly share COVID to him and to my parents who were senior citizens that were caring for him. Um, it, it's really, um, you're doing us a disservice, and it also is not really a good look on the county. People that have found out that we have been excluded after we served the county, and we literally served the, the entire timeframe. I served beyond a timeframe up until June of two thousand twenty-two. Um, I gave the county my youth. I became a mom. I got college degrees, uh, while working at Burlington County. Almost twenty years. And I'm being told that I'm not entitled to hazard COVID pay because of, uh, investigating language. I've gone over the American Rescue Plan. I've gone over so many documents. I've spoken to state officials. I've spoken to Congress. I've spoken to someone unofficially from the governor's office. Not one person has told me that there's any language in there that dictates that we cannot have hazard pay because we separated in good standing. When I left Burlington County, I didn't leave to, you know, sit at home or not work. I went to a state agency. And why did I do that? Because of him. Because I gave Public Safety my holidays, my weekends, overtime, mandatory overtime. How many of us, and some of us are here today, during the pandemic, were working mandatory overtime almost every shift? After working twelve hours, they would add four more hours, and we would work sixteen hours straight with no lunch break. I didn't have a lunch break for four months on my shift before I left. And this is during COVID. We didn't get a chance to work remote. There are employees that are getting hazard pay this week that work remote. That's crazy to me that we would be excluded after all the hard work that we put into working in Public Safety, answering nine-one-one. Short staffed. I believe we lost like eighty employees at Public Safety over the past year and a half. A lot of people left because they were overworked, they were sick. I still am sick from COVID. I have asthma permanently now. All that we had to endure, and we're being told that we don't deserve it, or we can't have it because we are no longer employed by the county, is unacceptable. We never even got a thank you. Those two years, not one thank you. Not one freeholder came up to Public Safety and said, "Thank you" for being here day in and day out, sixteen hours a day, then coming home and having to tend to a child and tend to our families and give COVID to them. Not even a thank you. But then, we're told that we don't qualify for hazard pay, and it really is almost a slap in the face to see Human Resources and other agencies get hazard pay that we're able to work remote. I never worked remote. And I believe that myself and the other sixteen-plus, however many more are going to call me that I don't even know. I don't even know these people at this point, and they're calling me, and they're being referred to me.
Your time is up, sorry.
I understand. But I did leave a message for you, Ms. Ms. Hobson. Um, I did call the other day. But we're, we're demanding that we be acknowledged. Thank you.
Miss Terrence Brown? It's Terrence Brown? Is there anyone else for comments on non-agenda items? Let us call. Seeing none, I'm now closing this portion, the public portion of the meeting, and we'll go to comments by Commissioners. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Director. Um, thank you, everyone, for coming out. Um, for those that celebrate, happy Diwali. Um, and so did you, Divis, that, um, that's a huge Indian holiday. Um, and that was, uh, last week. Um, and the governor, um, had a recognition event for that. Um, President Biden also had a recognition event of that at the White House. Uh, it is appreciative, uh, when, when higher offices, uh, recognize the diversity of the state and the country and, uh, recognize these special events. Uh, so, uh, just wanted to say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Eccle?
Thank you, Director. Um, thank you to those few residents who came out to offer genuine comments and feedback. It is important that you engage with the process. I wanted to, um, commend our Division of Parks and Resource Conservation for, um, an impressive Autumn Lands celebration this past weekend. It was the first time we offered that, that event. Mary Pat and Jeremy and their whole team did a really great job. I had the privilege on Sunday morning of, uh, starting my day at the Fire Academy at our, um, Emergency Services Training Center. It was the Fire Academy Family Day, and went halfway through their, uh, their program course. They get to bring their families out and show them what they work on and what they learn. And I got to learn a little bit about what they do there, and, and I'm, I have to say, I'm really pleased with our Emergency Services Training Center. I didn't know this until I spoke with Gary Gubbi and the folks out there that, um, that agencies all around the state and some federal agencies and military use our services for their training because we have first-class services there. And, uh, we even, we even offer a degree through their program there. We partnered with Royal College of, um, Burlington County to, um, RCDC to offer a Associate's Degree in Fire Science. That's, uh, really impressive, and, and they do really good work out there, and it's, and I wanted to let them know.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hobson?
Thank you, Director. So I'll start my comments off with Mr. Adenos. I may, I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Um, but to answer your question, is it normal for, uh, for vendors to speak with Commissioners? The answer is absolutely not. Um, as I state every time I have my comments, I will speak to anyone at any time about anything. I had met that vendor on several occasions out in the community. Um, when that RFP came up last year, she, she had questions. I made sure her questions got answered. I was not the one to answer her questions, but I made sure her questions got answered. So my comment from last meeting was, "You called me last year. Why did you call me this year?" That's all I was implying. I wasn't implying anything else. Um, to Mr. Duff, so I find it interesting that you informed the narrative that I speak at a lot of events with Dr. Tiffany Worthy. She is on council in Willingboro. I am a Willingboro resident. So I find it interesting that you would choose that narrative. But regarding the COVID, um, health loans, our board provided as much assistance to our residents, um, during COVID as possible. From the very start, it was our intention to make sure we helped our residents in any way possible. We didn't just do it through health loans. We did it through food drives. We started the food drives, I believe, since March or April of two thousand twenty, and we're still doing it. So we are very intentional when we're trying to help our residents. The health loans happen. When, when they come up, they go through a review process. We have a loan committee. Uh, and if they qualify, they're offered the loan. Some people don't take the loan. So to, so to imply that we're doing anything, um, uh, less than, um, professional, um, it, it's, it's not accurate. But I believe that you've already engaged with our Public Information Office, and you have already started exchanging, gathering information with... have already started exchanging, gathering information with our Public Information Office. So I find it interesting that you would then come here and imply that we're not willing to talk to you or not respond to you. That's simply not the case. So we will continue to help our residents as much as we can, as best as we can. But again, we have a tendency to get our words twisted. So I would say, as I always say every meeting, happy to talk to anyone about anything. So if you have reached out to me, it will, it will be in my intention to reach back out to you. Lastly, Ms. Solomon, you made a comment that we didn't thank our county, county workers. Have to respectfully disagree. I was director knowing COVID, right in the height of it, and I believe almost every meeting I thanked our county workers. You may, you may not have seen me, but I just believe there were certain restrictions on going to certain places, and that was for everyone in the entire world. So I did say thank you numerous times to our county employees. We thank you all from the beginning to the end, from the right to the left, from the front to the back. I'm not quite sure if you heard those thank yous, but I will say it again, and we always thank our county employees. We know how committed you are to our county residents, and we thank you. So it is unfortunate that your situation is what it is, but I just wanted to let you know, we said thank you multiple times. In closing, I would like to close with, this is the end of Breast Cancer Month. As a breast cancer survivor, almost six years in remission, I want to remind everyone to please make sure you're doing your self-exams, please let, make sure your self, make sure your loved ones are doing their self-exams. Most mammograms are free if you don't have health insurance, there's plenty of resources to get a mammogram. So please make sure you do that. I lost my mother to breast cancer. Thankfully, I'm a breast cancer survivor, so please, please, please make sure you are doing your self-exams, make sure you're getting your mammograms, and that goes for men as well as women. So I'd like to thank you all for coming this evening. Everyone, please get home safely.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Director Pulliam, I need you right here.
As most of you know, I'm the liaison to Public Works. So some of the comments that were made this evening about our Public Works, I want to take a moment and address at the end of what I have to say. If there's anybody out there that would like to get the correct data on what it is we did last year and we're doing this year, please reach out to me, I'll be glad to give you all the correct figures that you need. I'm happy to clarify a few things about our transportation infrastructure. I work very closely with our engineer and our engineering staff. Very happy to say that I'm proud of all the work that they've done, and I'm proud of the way that the county has treated the most important areas of the county, one of which just this recently, as everybody knows, up in Florence area, Mansfield, we've got a tremendous amount of traffic, we have insurgents of warehousing, and at more than eight hundred square miles, Burlington County is the largest county in New Jersey, and we're responsible for more than five hundred miles of county roads, four hundred eleven bridges, seven hundred culverts. Earlier this year, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission gave the Kinet County its highest rating for using grants for roads and other transportation improvements. So anybody can say out there that we don't get grants and we're not using grants, well, like I said, call me, I'll give you the correct flat. Tonight, the commissioners voted to advance some important road projects in Burlington County, Burlington Township, and Florence. This is what I'm referring to with, we've been trying to reduce the traffic up there for God knows how long, since I've been on the board. And I'm very happy to say that we're close to a resolution and helping the residents up there of what they had to put up with with regards to truck trap. Last year's overlay program repaved more than twenty-eight miles in seventeen towns. That's seventeen hour forty. Additional work and finishing touches on these roads were completed this year. This year, the Department of Public Works has filled close to five thousand puddles and used some three thousand tons of asphalt, performing smaller paving jobs on both county roads and local roads. The county is maintaining our infrastructure. At the same time, the board is also making sure that the taxpayer dollars and grant funds are being spent efficiently. In the case of this year's overlay plan, bids were solicited twice as the comment was made, and the submissions greatly exceeded the engineers' cost estimates. The county is now negotiating on an acceptable contract, and we're hopeful work will begin to start soon. Everybody realizes that paving is weather-dependent, but the work has been, but work has been completed during winter months previously. County is also preparing to request bids for next year's overlay, and there's no reason work on both years can encourage sign of things. Once again, anybody who wants the real data on what our Public Works and we've done in the county, please reach out to me, I'll be glad to give you the data. And I want to, as I always have, thank all the department heads, thank all the people in the county, the work that you do every day, especially Joe, thank you so much. I personally have seen what you've done throughout the county, county with our, our roads, and I really appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll pass it over to my staff.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Apologize for this voice again. I want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. You know, as every meeting, we have a lot of information. We had the retiree of Lee, Hal Bozart being recognized by a resident for being a good Samaritan. You know, we sit up here and face you folks, and that's a responsibility we all take here in the front of this room very seriously. Sometimes it may take a little bit of the thick skin, but then again, it goes with the territory. But we're here to make sure that Burlington County remains a great place to live, to work, to retire and do business. We might not all agree on how that happens, and that's okay. We all want what's best for Burlington County. Now I'd like to share a little more information with you. First, you all know that the county has decided to distribute premium pay for essential workers because we recognize the contributions and services performed by those workers during the unprecedented COVID-nineteen crisis. County's eligibility requirement or criteria for the premium pay was developed from language contained in the American Rescue Plan Act and initial guidance received from the state of New Jersey. To our knowledge, only one other county in New Jersey has created a premium pay program to support essential employees, and that county specified only current employees were eligible. That being said, at an upcoming meeting, we will have a resolution on the agenda expanding premium pay to retirees who meet the criteria. More information will be made available at that meeting. Second item I'd like to discuss tonight is an important new initiative. We've approved the creation of a new grant program funded through the American Rescue Plan Act. This grant program is designed to assist not-for-profit organizations who are seeking to create and develop affordable housing. Affordable housing is a topic that is important to this board, and we have set aside three million dollars for this purpose. Home prices and rental fees have soared over the past few years, so this grant program is an important step in ensuring that our residents have someplace affordable to live. Third topic is transportation infrastructure. You just heard my colleague, Deputy Director Pullian, talk about it. We passed resolutions tonight with Burlington Township and Florence to try and reduce and ameliorate some of that truck traffic in that area. Both Florence and Burlington Township have agreed to partner with us on this project, and we're really thrilled to have their support. The last item I'd like to discuss with you is our Wi-Fi initiative. Again, we're funding this through ARPA funds. We're looking to provide free internet access for our residents in our county parks. Connectivity is vital in today's society, and this board is committed to doing our part to make sure our residents have free access to the internet. We have free Wi-Fi right now in county buildings and our libraries, but expanding to our county parks will allow for more residents to utilize this important service. Finally, I'd like to thank and wish our colleague a Happy Diwali and all the best in the new year. I want to tell everybody, please get home safe. And in a couple of weeks, it's going to be Election Day. No matter who you stand up and vote for, it's part of your responsibility as an American, and it's something that we should take seriously. Unfortunately, this election, and I learned this in twenty years as a political director for our union, is the lowest turnout election there is. I don't know why that is. Every election is important. Every election has something for everyone in this room. So do your part, go out and vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. And with that, I'd like to thank everyone, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Pullian.